Good evening, I'd like to welcome you to this Region 12 Board of Education Special Meeting, November 28, 2016. Rebecca, would you take attendance, please?
Anthony Amato. Valerie Anderson. Alan Brown. Gregory Cava. Rebecca Devine, I'm here. Michelle Gora.
She's here.
James Hirschfield.
I'm here.
Stephanie Kolnick. Jennifer Pody. Lisa Rousch. Michael Sinatra. Peter Tagley.
Here. Valerie, Valerie is here, okay. All right, thank you. You have eight presents, so we have a quorum at this time. All right, item three in our agenda is approve updated ed specs, conceptual drawings, and costs for AgSTEM project. Dr. Castillo?
Yes, I guess I'm going to, I don't see Mr. Cava, so I'm going to start, and if he comes in, we also have Castle Booze here.
Okay.
I don't have the Friday before Thanksgiving, 18th, I believe, November 18th, a group of us went up to DAS in Hartford and met with Michelle Dixon, Costas Viomatis, the two state attorneys from the State Department of Education, and two additional architects from DAS. And it was decided that we were not going to leave that meeting until a decision was made on AgSTEM and moving forward. So we're there now. Tomorrow, that was part of the agreement, that we get tomorrow, so that we get on the priority list that's going to the legislature in December.
Basically, after a lot of discussion about, okay, after a lot of discussion about the population, which we have given a conservative number of 139 students, just for the benefit those in the audience, we came up with that number by taking the average of the last three years of students in Nanawag from our sending districts, took the average and added one student because that is the agreement that everyone signed. We kept the cap for Danbury, and although we're meeting with Bethel very soon, we didn't include them in that number. And Mr. Amato had done a graph for us, and we went all the way, I think, from 119 to 151. And the board decided to land on 139. And so that's what the population is, very conservative, and the state was okay with that. So with a population of 139 and our current students that are going to be in middle school and the high school, they said to us that our building was too big, and they wanted us to reduce the footprint. So after a whole bunch of discussion, they said to us, we got to the point where it was, give us a number, give us a number. And so the number was under $30 million for the agri-science program, where the science program, the science project, is already a separate project, okay? We already had that, and that was approved a couple of weeks ago, at $2,900 and something. Let me just give you the exact number, so we have that. We're not talking about it tonight, but in case people want to know, the science is, I believe, $2,977,427. So, but we're talking about the AgSTEM. So in order to get under $30 million, due to the hard work of Castle Booze and ONG and the team, we eliminated the large animal building. So if you remember on the former drawings, we had two buildings out. Now, this is not correctly done, but we had the equine center, we had the large animal building, and we had the greenhouses. We have eliminated the large animal building. It was, what did we call it, large animal? Am I saying it correctly? Large animal? Please. Okay. Okay, this is a former, just so you can see. This building is now gone, and these pieces have been repurposed in the new configuration. So basically, we still have the equine center. We have, on the left side of the equine center, the equipment garage. On the right side of the equine center, we have the large animal housing. We reduced the equine center, we no longer have the classroom, we no longer have the administrative area. Then we have, in the new addition, we've made this area smaller. This is the agricultural mechanical shop, the agricultural engineering area, the welding area, we've reduced that area. This is a new piece of the building, the blue are new pieces. The green is the current building that's being renovated, it's in the back of the building, where we have currently the old auto shop, the old workroom. That's all being repurposed, and we've added the small animal housing and the dog grooming kennels in that new renovated area. So every piece of this animal facility is now currently back in our footprint, so we did not lose any program. Program is the same, we just brought more of the program into the building, and we reduced some square footage. The greenhouses are the same, the science area is the same. The orange piece of the science area are the current science labs that we have, that we have to renovate regardless of whether or not we do AgSTEM, because this is a recommendation by NIASK, if we want to keep our accreditation, this needs to be done. And that's what we did. So with that said, you were given, board members, a couple of things. You were given the new ed specs, which relate to the new square footages, okay? You were given the new site plan, which I'll be happy to go over right here. We got rid of, I shouldn't say got rid of, we reduced some of the site plan work. We are back down to four tennis courts. We had six. We moved a retaining wall in this area, which saved us money. We're no longer redoing work in the fields back here, which saved us money. And so between all of those things, we were able to get the project under $30 million. And so that's the pieces of information you have. You have the ed specs, you have the new site plan, and you have the Chapag Valley Regional Agri-Science STEM Academy additions and alterations revised concept plan, where it shows you that the estimated construction cost of $25,788,406, and with the soft costs of $4,169,002, the total estimated project is $29,957,408, which is a reduction of $6,556,552. I'm sorry, let me say that again. Reduction of $6,556,552. So our projects combined are just below $33 million, where the AgSTEM is just below 30, and the science labs are just below 3 million. We've got a lot of support from DAS. They were very appreciative of the work that we have done to really look at the population, to really look at the scope of work, to being efficient and effective with our plan, working with the architects. And when we left, it was agreed upon that if we got under $30 million, which we are, they would then move our science lab project to a priority A project, because it's a B, so that both of them would go on the priority list as A projects, and that they would support the project with the commissioner and with the legislature. So it's really a wonderful, wonderful meeting, and I won't thank everyone who participated. You know who you are, we really appreciate what you've done, and we're moving forward. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to answer questions. Castle Booze is here, and then we will need motions.
Thanks so much for your diligence and seeing how we can have a great program and the AgSTEM in its entirety. I was a little concerned we weren't able to do some of the program, but you think you can do it in-house?
Absolutely.
Okay.
The program has not been changed.
And what looks to be our percentage of reimbursement, plus minus?
One of the things, and Bob can also chime in, we are hoping very close to 80 percent because, we don't know that yet, but we're getting closer because of the fact that our footprint is reducing, and so the space ratio should be more positive. Am I right?
So it was 11.9 thereabouts before, and now it would be?
The funding side of the plan brings us down to about $7,703,000 per hour.
Does that include the science labs? Okay. Okay, that sounds good. I think--
You want to press the button and repeat that number, please? So we have it for TV audience.
What it left us with is $7,703, approximately $7,703,000 to be financed on our side when we get the 80 percent around that piece. There's a smaller piece in there that's worth 20 percent, that's why it's not a full 80 percent number, same as it was in the original.
Peter?
Can I just finish up, though?
Sure.
So the total debt that we are responsible for that is not against state grant for the entirety of the project is, give or take--
$7,700.
Including labs.
I didn't bring the lab piece with me tonight, but I can, I think I got it in here. But it's separate, and I didn't bring it with us.
Excluding labs, what's the figure?
Right.
7.9.
Okay.
7.3.
7.7.
Right. Are you done, Valerie?
Yeah, but I'd like to hold, to have the whole package eventually.
Peter?
Well, I just want to clarify, exactly what are you looking from us for tonight?
We need, the Board of Education needs to approve the educational specifications. You have done it already twice. This will be the third revision, and so that's what we're looking for. The other piece that we've done in the past, but it doesn't have to be done, but we did it last time, so I don't want us to change midstream what we did, is you really should just approve the site plans and the conceptual drawings and the estimated costs. Okay, so that would be helpful.
These are things that the administration needs to proceed with the state, is that right?
Well, the only thing I need is the ed specs.
And you're asking us to approve all three?
Only because we did it a month, whenever we did it last, a month ago, we did all three. So I just want us, because we did it all three last time, I think we should do it this time, but all I need are the ed specs.
All right, Valerie?
I move to approve of the ed specs for the, I'm sorry, I'm getting a date here, for the new project as outlined at the meeting, November 28, 2016.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. There's a formal, a written document that was handed to all of us with the ed specs. That's what we're being asked to approve, Valerie?
Right.
Is there anything further?
Yeah, so--
Anthony.
I'll just make it quick. So it's not about money, it's about specifications. Well, even though money is attached to specifications--
I mean, the board is endorsing the project to move forward--
I understand.
--the process. I'm sorry, go ahead, Anthony.
So, Bob, to follow up on Valerie's questions, the 7.7, the two green labs are AgSTEM labs--
Correct.
--which are part of the 2.9 budget. No?
No, it's part of the ag science.
Okay.
Everything green, everything blue is the cost of the ag science.
Okay, so--
And the other piece, I just looked it up, is $2,167, so slightly less than $10 million, $9,870,000.
Okay, so just to be clear, we got the alterations budget of 2.914 is just for the orange--
Correct.
--labs. Okay. All right.
That hasn't changed.
That hasn't changed, okay. And what's the share line on that cost? We're not looking at 80 percent on that, right? That's more like--
No, our share is $2,167.
Oh, that's our share of the two, okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
But the reimbursement, it's my understanding that the reimbursement rates for these has not really, has not been set, is that right, as of this time?
Right, I don't think it's, right, been set with the state.
No, I mean, we have a, part of this whole package going in is the, what's referred to as a space standards waiver request to bring this back all the way to the 80 percent for the ag science. And from what we discussed up there, and what hopefully they'll take into consideration is the noneducational space, it brings us close to that number now.
Okay, but we still don't have a date from the state, or did DAS set some level of expectation when the state's going to finalize their share numbers?
Not at this point. Not at this point.
So just to review, not to review, but to restate, so basically, this new project with the existing four labs comes to a little less than $10 million, which represents--
Our side.
--our side, our responsibility versus what formerly had been something like 11.9.
Yeah, something I believe--
And that was also with the labs, that we know get very little grant money, but with a reduced project.
Yeah, the debt side of this came down by 2.5 million.
Great, thank you.
Anthony.
Could we just mention escalation, because I think that's a good point for everybody to know. Ken, will you speak to the escalation?
Please.
That should have been part of our savings.
All right, if you remember, guys--
Excuse me, Ken, would you briefly describe for us what ONG's role in this is?
ONG's role, we're your construction managers, which means we make sure we keep you on budget all the way through. We work with Castle Booze on the initial design, looking at pricing it out, and then as they progress, we do additional estimates, that schematic, DD, and construction documents. So before you go out to bid, we'll know what it is, and then what happens is you go out and you publicly bid this entire project, and that's really when you'll have your hard numbers, because we are just providing estimates at this time. Okay, so if you remember, we should have actually been started this project already. You know, we should have been in the ground, the state held off a year. So when you hold off a year, you actually have escalation, because now your start date of construction was delayed a year. So we added in there 4 percent on top of your original cost to make it work. Now, we had escalation, but we only had a year of escalation. So what happened is your construction numbers went up, and you're actually carrying escalation to the start of construction now. So what you had to do was actually look at the project and pull out 4 percent, because you only had so much money to work with, you're not going back to taxpayers, you're not going back to the state. So if it gets delayed again, it's just more stuff that you have to look to reduce the cost or do some other changes to pick up that escalation cost, okay?
Is there any questions? Ken?
Oh, I--
Valerie? No, for Ken. Anyone? Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Valerie?
A couple of other points. You will be preparing a business plan with a cash flow.
Absolutely.
Two things, the state did not disagree with our 139 in terms of our, what we estimate the population to be.
They were surprised that we went that conservative.
Thank you.
Yes.
And the method we use, they seem to approve of that method.
They were fine with the method, but they really appreciated the fact that we were very conservative. They didn't expect us to be that conservative.
And you're still having a presentation, I think, to Bethel?
Bethel presentation, yes. And, you know, we're very excited about this. We think once we do recruitment and all those other things we've talked about many times, we will get more students, but so that everyone's comfortable, we went with 139.
Okay, and then one more question, because it's very important. You're going to develop a business plan and basically a cash flow, but you do believe from the costs that we've been looking at for the original, that we'll be able to make some modifications in those costs in terms of staffing, things like that, operating expenses in general because of the size change?
We're hoping, you know, we're still working on that, that's a work in progress.
With the fewer square meters of building, we have over 80, so it's going to come down a portion for that. The buildings that don't appear in the corner, so those will come off.
But also, I mean, we're looking at perhaps some, and I'm going way back to the original presentation of staffing and, you know, custodians and teachers.
We should be able to save some staff, absolutely.
Okay, and that will be developed after we do, you run this up and see the next step.
We're hoping, I sent an email to the board tonight about January 10th, about having a community conversation about, with the business plan, with updated information, all of those things, so that questions can be addressed and answered and explained, and hopefully we'll have the business plan done by then. You know, as people hopefully can see, this is a work in progress, there's a lot of back and forth with the state, there's a lot of ebb and flow with Castle Booze and ONG, but we're really very pleased that we got such a positive response from DAS, because the state really does support this project.
Great. I would just encourage, and obviously, I know you'll be open about it, but that we do look at our costs and see if we can just cut down some of those operating costs as much as we can, still with a great program, but, you know, saving on staff here and there so we can begin to see how this could be profitable in terms of a better education for children in general, but also not too much of a drain on the taxpayers.
Okay, anyone else? Peter?
But I don't think we're talking about the relationship--
Excuse me, there's a motion on the table to approve the ed specs, that's what we're talking about.
Well, people are getting me confused by getting a target, I think, but forget it then.
Yes, Anthony?
So, removing the small animals and basically redistributing back into, you know, here and there, net-net, I mean, we looked at this from a programmatic standpoint, and we don't feel concerned about impacting the attractiveness of the program because we don't have a separate building.
No. We have--
How does this compare to other?
Right. First of all, we fought tooth and nail to keep this equine center. Karen Files did a great job really explaining the importance of this program. We also explained the importance of this program of attracting students to our school, not only public school students, but private school students. So this was non-negotiable, and after about an hour of back and forth, they agreed, okay? They just wanted to hear us. Although we redistributed that animal building, in the future, if we get those 200 students, we can put in another grant and build that building, okay? So that's always a possibility. Right now, this is the most conservative way that we can do every part of the program, be under $30 million, and move forward with the program. So we're okay with it. We really are okay with it.
Anthony, the large animal portion that disappeared from the building is hanging off the right side of that thing, so it just got removed and slightly downsized--
I know. The observation is that when we had a green field, literally--
Right.
--we decided that the best plan would have a dedicated building called Small Animal or--
Right, right.
--Large and Small Animal Building, and that's the way we went. Now we're sort of, if you will, making a compromise, you know, from, with respect to the original plan, which was, again, a green field, and we still have all the bits and pieces, but now they're kind of scattered about.
They're all, you're right, they're still all--
So the question is, we thought it would be great to have it all in one area, now we can't have it that way, so any, what did we do, and maybe we did nothing at all, to the attractiveness of the program? That's really the question.
I don't think we did anything to the attractiveness. I think this is going to be very, very attractive. I think the greenhouse, I think the new science labs, and all the work that we've done in the building. I met, and you can speak also, but let me just say this, sorry, I met three Sherman parents this weekend at the Cabe Conference, and they were just raving about Chapag, and how Chapag is the number one choice now for Sherman students, and that everybody's talking about it, they want to go to Chapag, they want to go to Chapag. So word is getting out, so I think that's a good thing. And we only picked one student to come from Sherman in our plan, okay? So even if we get five, that's four more students we've already addressed.
Valerie, did you want to speak to Anthony's question?
Yes, I do. Thank you for asking that question, Anthony. Chuck Booze, Castle Booze. The concept of putting the large animal area with the equine center is primarily due to the turnout area, because those beasts have to go out as well as, they don't stay in all the time. There's actually an outdoor turnout area there, and so now that is kind of combined with the equine facility. The small animal, which is dogs, and that's primarily grooming, and the pocket pet type facility, those two labs were brought into the existing building, and to no detriment at all to the program. In fact, there is a little bit of reinforcement, because sales has people coming in from the outside at particular times, and so does dog grooming, so that is now combined. And what we will do, we'll mechanically isolate both of those areas, so we don't have any, let's say, odors infiltrating into the school area at all. There'll be separate return air and separate ventilation, et cetera. I just wanted to point that out. The program has not been reduced or decimated in any way, I think it works rather well.
Any other questions, Mr. Booze? Do you have any general statement you want to make to us about what's been done?
Well, I'm, you know, I've got a lot of experience, a lot of years of experience, and the interaction of everybody in the Chapag community to make this particular project happen has been really unique, and I congratulate you. That's--
Okay.
Essentially, that's what I want to say.
I have one question. There's no way to save that fifth and sixth tennis court?
Sir?
We went from six tennis courts to four.
Well, at this particular point in time--
Oh, we have four now.
We're in four now, we were going up to six, we're back to four.
You're excused. No, that's, I'm all set. Anyone else? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chuck.
All right, there's a motion on the table, is there anything else? Alan.
So everything is shifting, and this looks great, and I'm seeing that we're down, the costs are down, even with escalation, we're down to 16 percent, pretty much total, and what we're going to owe as our part since the last year. I guess you're going to, you know, at first I thought January, mid-January, we'll do it sooner, but I guess you're going to need, with the holidays, you're going to need all that time to craft a business plan to make this work, because it seems like we haven't sacrificed the project at all, which is great. But we have to figure out the difference between the price of this and the enrollment, which is, we're being conservative about, you know. I can't wait until enrollment is, turns out where it used to be, and we have to--
It will be very--
--build another building. But in the meantime, we have to, you know, the business plan may or may not be similar to the one-- to the one that went to referendum. What kind of a timeframe do we have? Right now, you know, we're just really approving the pieces, the ed specs and the drawings and the costs at the moment, but it's the costs versus revenue that we'll be talking about in January. What kind of timeframe do we have to... I mean, are we at the point of no return by January? I want to make sure that when we talk about this, that not only the board and, and the community, who's been very, what's the word I'm looking for? I'm trying to find the right word for this. Very, oh, I'm picking all the wrong words, they're running through my mind. The community is very outspoken, very outspoken on both sides of this issue. What time would they'll be in January, and I guess it's partly for you and partly for the consultants who are here, to be able to work further, to be able to plan for more or less contingency, to be able to change things, or, you know, God bless us, it'll all be perfect, and we won't have to worry about it, you got more work, it'll all be set in January, and everyone will be happy. But I'm just wondering, where does that fit in our, in our structure of...
I'll begin with it, and then I'll have ONG and Castle Booze finish. Castle Booze has given us a calendar, and they are gonna present it at the next building committee meeting, and that will give a timeline to be open in 2019. In order to be open in 2019, we really have to go back to the issue of whether or not the board is willing to take a risk and spend money starting in January, so that, I'm gonna call it shovel-ready, because that's what everybody's been calling it, but it's to get the documents done, the drawings done, the bid documents, all of those things. I'm not exactly sure of the cost, because it's changed, but it's probably around $1 million, okay? So that's the first piece. Nothing that has been given to us is in stone, because everything that Castle Booze and ONG has done is really estimates, you know, based on what they see. So these things may be tweaked, et cetera, and that, you know. The business plan, we are hoping to have everything done by that first week in January, so that this way, we can have that conversation with the public. But the board's gonna have to make a decision. Now, the one thing to keep in mind, and, you know, when you're making the decision, is if you decide you don't want to take a risk, and you want to wait till the legislature approves the funding, the governor signs, and the bonding, bond council takes action, you are now postponing another year, and you now have another year of escalation. So at some point in January, the rubber's gonna hit the road, and decisions are gonna be, have to be made. And so, that's my point, but can you talk about maybe just the finessing of the project as we move through? If you don't mind?
Charlie?
You have to...
Sorry, thank you.
Most building projects, they start with conceptual schematics and schematics and so on, and we, we have an estimate. The, the estimate is meant to survive that process of refinement between now and the time the project is actually out to bid. The timeline is critical, because the opening date wants to be no later than July 31st, hopefully a month earlier than that, in 2019, so that everybody can settle in for the opening of school in late August or September. In order to do that, we have to complete the design documents, the bid documents, by August 1st of 17. Then there's a, an approval period, where local approvals have to be given for the project, I mean, that would be tested all during the spring and early summer, but that, those approvals will have to be finalized by October 1st, and then that will give ONG the opportunity to actually bid the project, or get solid estimates by the 1st of January, and construction actually is scheduled in the calendar to begin January 1st, to enable the contractor to complete the project in approximately, what is that, 19 months? So the, I mean, time is really of the essence right now, and if, if, if we're not authorized to go into production by, by February 1st, then your July date gets moved to August 31st. It, it just is, there's some things that, there's not a lot of wiggle room in that schedule. And also, there's not a lot of exposure in the beginning either. I mean, the, the first couple of months, there's not a great deal of dollars being committed, because we're refining schematics as such, it's, the heaviness comes in later on, in late spring, early summer. That's when the, you know, the, the monthly costs are, are much higher, because we have a lot of consultants involved as well at that time. The time is of the essence. Peter? Well, I'm not sure where Alan was going, but Anthony stood up and said 195. That was the number we needed to get to the revenue neutral. And I'm not sure where you're going with this, the board bought 195, the public bought 195, the fact that that could change doesn't affect, doesn't seem to affect the course of the project, from what I've been listening to for the last couple of months, so, are, are you, you getting wet feet or something? I'm not sure I understand.
Oh, no, no, wet feet, cold feet, um...
Cold feet, whatever it was.
Athletes' feet, uh, no. It's basically, I, I am, I am considering the difference between what was 195 and 139, and I didn't do the percentage, but that's a greater percentage than the difference between the 16% cost savings.
Right.
So that's what I was saying, is that in order to figure out whether we can actually make the same kind of revenue neutral or revenue positive business plan that we had before, that may be impossible, but we may be able to get close to that, and therefore have strong stomachs about embarking on a project that was supposed to be revenue neutral, but now will, will not be. It looks as if because of what we've done here, and because of other factors, in operating costs perhaps, we may be closer than I thought, say, three months ago. So that's one half, is to think the timeline of what we would need to, you know, hopefully digest, and maybe it'd be a long meeting in January with a lot of people talking, and us making a quick decision, but that's, there's gonna be a lot of thinking as to how close we get to that original business plan, and what that means to us. On another, another, I, I don't think we need to worry about the shovel-ready or not, because if we don't do shovel-ready, and it's delayed a year, I just did some quick math while Chuck was talking, 4% of our project is about $1 million, 1.2 million. So if we, we either are going to spend it one way or the other, we're either gonna, we're either gonna put our shoulders behind this project or not. If we do, we shouldn't get wet or cold feet about the shovel-ready, if we're all behind it, because not doing shovel-ready and being disappointed and having a year go by is gonna cost the exact same amount of money, 1.2 million. So, you know, because in contingency. So, we would have, you know, we would think very carefully, I think, about how we're gonna take that risk, and it would be great if we had, you know, if there's any pursuit of how to offset that risk. Now, DAS weren't the ones imposing that shovel-ready requirement on us, were they? It was the legislature that was, right? Who was it who imposed shovel-readiness on us?
DAS is, is the one who sent the letter, who strongly suggested to be shovel-ready.
In order to hit this priority list?
Well, we're gonna be funded.
To be funded. Well, what I'm saying is, like, you know, we would, there was a priority list that we were on, but if we weren't shovel-ready, we might drop off of it, that kind of thing? Remember how we went from a...
Yes.
Right. So it was DAS, right?
Yes.
Well, that's good, because, you know, despite what goes on in the legislature, it seems as if DAS is far more versed in our projects than they used to be, and understands how much work we've gone, we were putting into it, as opposed to, you know, you know. So that might be something that we can talk about between now and January, too, January as well, so that we can, you know, maybe offset our risk of that shovel-readiness in a different way, you know? We don't, I don't know, just for people who might be squeamish about the one some odd million, to be able to see how necessary that still is. And if it is necessary, remember, that's the amount of contingency anyway for, for escalation. I mean, not contingency, escalation.
Peter?
Valerie, did you want us...
I'm gonna give you a chance to respond, but, yes, Valerie?
Well, so then, then, the essence is that we're committed, from what I, I mean, basically...
Peter, that's not before us tonight, we're deciding on ed specs.
Right, so I'm fine with that, but, and we've gotten a little away from the subject.
As usual.
I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Maybe it's my fault. It's not, yeah, it's, it's a good subject to have, all right. Valerie?
So I'm gonna stay on the, away from the subject for a moment, because I do think we have to consider the fact that it was a very important exercise, to sharpen the pencils, to really get into the numbers, to see where we're going, trying to be more conservative. That only benefits us, and it has, it'll benefit the public. I do hope that we might, and I know a business plan is, is gonna be a big undertaking, but I wish we could do some kind of cash flow, operating expenses, you know, quick and dirty before our meeting, if we have that meeting on the 9th, as a conversation, so that more people see that maybe we'll be a little closer to a break even than we thought, and especially since our debt service will decrease somewhat. So if we could, you know, present that to our public, if we have that, that forum on the 9th, which I hope we do, that'll be very wise. Pardon?
Okay.
I'm sorry, the 10th. And the other thing, and I'm gonna go tiptoeing into national politics, OMG.
Please don't.
But, but I just want to say that I think we are, who knew, because of what might or might not be the new Secretary of Education, and the kind of going towards more voucher systems, charter schools, which I'm totally against, but since that's going to be perhaps an atmosphere, we are building that. So I think we can improve in terms of how many kids are coming to us for specialized education, since that seems to be what might be the case in the next four years.
All right, thank you. Anything else on the motion? Anthony?
Just want to clarify, just to make sure we're, we keep throwing around numbers, so when we look at the enrollment, right, we're using a 139, that's total enrollment, so that's Region 12 participants as well as sending towns. So when you break that down as a reminder, you know, it was 119 outside and 20 from Region 12. So when you compare that, so the 119 is to be compared to the 196, so when we're talking about what numbers, so you don't, just want to make sure we're clear on that. So it's not 196 versus 139, it's 196 versus 119. Just, we've been throwing around a lot of numbers, and I'm just trying to keep the record straight.
Okay.
Which is my closing comment, Jim, was I understand the, believe me, I would love to see the business case finalized as, as quickly as, as anyone else, but I would err on the side of completeness and accuracy before we share numbers with each other and the public. I mean, I just think that we've, we, we should do whatever we can to be ready for the 10th with real numbers. Can't control the state on the spending shares, but, you know, we, we should just try as hard as we can, Pat.
I was going to, I didn't, but I was going to comment that Pat said that she was going to try to have this thing done, so there's no assurance that it will be done. I'm sure they will do everything they can, but it should, I certainly agree, it should be accurate and...
And we could really, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we could have the public community conversation without the numbers, just answer questions...
No, no, I'm not suggesting...
And then have another one, if we needed to, so that people had some information if they had questions.
Okay.
You know.
Is there anyone else? On the motion? All right, there's a motion on the table then to approve the updated ed specs, which we have in front of us dated November 28, 2016. All those in favor say aye? Is there any opposed? Is there any abstain? All right, the passage unanimously, thank you. Is there a motion, it was requested by the superintendent to approve the conceptual drawing and the cost estimates? They moved and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye? Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes, thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you all.
Thank you, everybody.